We are back live here in Cassius County. I left the record reflect that no decision was made in closed session. And we will, and we'll have no action on the following agenda item here. Okay drainage. Do we need, oh, we need Jennifer, don't we?
Yeah.
If any of you want to see the permit for that tile from our, that's here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are up to drainage. First item on the agenda for drainage is discussion decision authorized representatives for federal slash state assistance.
Yeah, um, this is something I thought we should put on the agenda. To have board action on it, it wasn't, wasn't something we previously had board action on, but with the changes in the auditor's office, we did some updates, but just thought it'd be good to have in front of everybody and have that open conversation. I've obviously been very involved with this stuff due to the projects in my district, but if anybody else would like to have a crack at it, I would be more than welcome that.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
Kyle, you've been on it for so long and are aware of the project that's going on and, and our office has, the staff that we have in our office has never been involved in any of it. So we need somebody that knows what they're doing, knows the projects, knows the FEMA process. I mean, I suggest you stay on it for one reason, to guide us through that process. And two, I feel like if you stepped back, you'd kind of be stepping back from the projects you're currently involved in. Does that make sense? So I request that you stay on, just because I feel like you'd be living in, leaving in the middle of something and not finishing it.
I kind of feel the same way. I think it would be unfair to the, to anyone stepping in on that because there's, it's been going on for a lot of years. If you don't have as much of the background, I think at least you, you need to follow through and see this one through. If, you know, if we get through this project and, and we need to make a change, okay. But I think this needs to be finished first before we make a change. That's my opinion. And, I mean, are we talking only about, you know, your position? Or, you know, since we did remove someone, we also need to fill that?
Yeah, we would, we, we should have, we should have, we should have two.
Because the other person's Liam, right?
Um, we should have one from the board and one from the auditor's office and that was obviously changed.
And then Liam?
He's a consultant, so that's, that's outside of this anyway.
Okay, okay.
We would, we would have had the, um, board authorization to hire him as a consultant way back when. So this is, this would not affect that at all.
Okay.
And I mean, I don't know, um, how you feel about this Tammy, but I almost think it, you know, for right now, the representative from your office should be you. You know, um, Jennifer's new.
Yeah.
It, you know, if, if down the road that needs to change as well, I think that's okay too. But I think for right now, I think it should be you.
Well, I'd like to learn it because I haven't been involved with it before and I think it would be good for me to have access and see what happens behind the scenes as far as FEMA goes.
Any information you could give to me and not necessarily keep me in the loop, but train me as that goes on the table.
Exactly, exactly.
So how many do we need? Just two?
One from the board, one from the auditor's office.
Okay, I'll make motion to set the representatives. For FEMA is Kyle and Tammy.
Second, Kyle.
If you're okay with that, Kyle. Discussion, or we need a second for?
Amber.
Oh, wait a second, okay, well, the other thing discussed.
I'd be more than happy to hand it off to someone. I do understand there's a number of reasons that, um, consistency would be an advantage here, but I think with some of the comments and discussion that's been had around this, I wanted to make it clear that I'm not desiring to maintain this. I'm more than happy to let somebody else take over if they feel they would like to, so.
Well, and I understand, you know, some of your feelings as it goes, sometimes it, it has been kind of difficult. There's been a lot of controversy that has surrounded that, but, um, that's also can happen in any situation as board members and we can't just say, okay, I'm done, I'm done dealing with it then. You know what I mean? You, it, it's just part of the job, hate to say it, but as an elected official, sometimes that goes with the territory, but as long as you feel it, you've made good decisions, the right decisions, you just stand behind it and.
Well, I, I have and that's, that's important. I mean, I, I don't have a problem sleeping at night over the decisions that I've made to this point or the actions that's been taken. And I think there has been a lot of focus on questions or concerns, but there has been a lot of good that has came from this too. I mean, we're talking even today, we're over a million dollars that's been received for this project on its own. So there's been a lot of value brought to the Sioux County by this, which I try to remind myself of frequently and other people do too, but, um, I just, just wanted it to be open and, I mean, regardless of who the representative would be, it's not like I'm disappearing tomorrow from the actual project, so I just wanted to make sure it was open that if anybody else wanted to, they sure could. But, and I, that's really all I have to say, I guess.
So what's involved, I mean, on an, on an ongoing basis, is this communication or the application or, or what?
At this stage of the game, I would say it's substantially different than it was previously, like in the beginning, you're dealing with setting up all the stuff. There's a lot of steps in the process that have to be accomplished. Carter would have gone through some of this with his recent project, but even with some of that, I was primary point of contact on that, even though it was in his district, but.
They still send you all the emails and?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of kind of standard communication that comes along with that. There's communication with state representatives, obviously our consultant that's working on these projects to make sure that he's fully understanding what's going on and confirming that the paperwork's correct as much as possible. But for this disaster in particular, I mean, right now it's basically waiting for FEMA to respond to the appeal. Until that happens, there's not anything huge and substantial. There, there's things like quarterly reports, there's all sorts of odds and ends. Paperwork that goes along with it, I would say, but, um.
Do you do that?
Sometimes you have to sign off on things, yes, but a lot of times that's prepared by either the state or our consultant.
When, when you're signing off on things, is it, just because I don't know, we haven't done any of that? How is it presenting to the rest of the board?
I don't know that there's been a formal process that that has gone through for any of it. So, I mean, Carter's, for example, Roger had stuff with FEMA before. I don't know that any of that's ever been presented to the board on a formal basis.
I guess just so, I guess so the rest of the board is kind of aware of what's going on, like something has transpired or something's been signed off on or whatever the language is, you know, it's, just that we're all up to date on it because as, you know, we all kind of do get the questions for it and, we can at least give an update if we're asked if something has been said in the board meeting.
Kyle, this, these forms that you submitted with the request, um, looks like it's a resolution?
I don't know that it needs to be in a resolution form for our process. Quite frankly, I don't, I mean, we could put a resolution number on it, but I don't know that it has to be for our sake of things. But I guess, yeah, there, it would have been back in 2019, I think, when I was put on here and it wasn't a board action. I mean, that was discussion with me and Roger primarily because we had most of the stuff and he didn't want to do it, so.
So this, this isn't necessarily just drainage, it could be, it could be other things that were an actual disaster or?
Um.
This is drainage, Cassius County Drainage District.
This is primarily drainage. There, there are other disasters and projects that would be with it as far as like if emergency management or secondary roads have stuff in there. It would kind of be the same structure. I can't tell you off the top of my head if they're actually in the same portal online, but there's, I mean, it's grants portal for the federal side of things and you can log in and see the different, grants and all the different DI's under there and it's, it's a complicated process, but there's a lot of stuff in that system.
The legal name does say Cassius County Drainage District. It does have the incorrect address.
Oh, that's what I was just gonna say.
Where is it?
Where is it?
On the resolution that's in your packet.
In your packet, yeah. Oh, one twenty-one.
Yeah, that's Sheriff's Office, yeah.
Yeah. So that was probably because of emergency management's address would have established it originally. Would have had the account, so like when Dave Penton would have been here, he would have had that set up. So that's probably the reason behind that, but yeah, I mean, we can definitely update that now.
Okay.
I guess that hasn't been anything that I focused on, not been a top priority, I suppose, but.
Well, I think this is the application and it's by resolution, so I mean, I would think that we, we should probably use their form.
Yeah, and it does say please attach meeting minutes showing the approval of the resolution, so I think they need both.
Yep, and it would be the change, um, in authorized representative piece of it, but yeah, I mean.
The authorized representative would be the board member and finance officer would be the auditor's office?
Uh, well, I would think it would be.
I think it's the other way around.
It's the other way around.
Um.
I think the chief financial officer is the board.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I can see the wisdom of you finishing up what you're doing. I, uh, I don't have any, many other drainage, drainage responsibilities. I'd be willing to help or learn or whatever, but.
That'd be, that'd be great too, so.
I don't, but I, again, I can see the wisdom of finishing it. I don't know what timetable is to finish this one up or anything. Nobody does, right?
Ideally three years ago.
Yeah, or, anyway.
So we're good to vote on this motion then?
Can we vote by resolution?
Yeah, this will be resolution, it'll be ten, ten fourteen twenty-five oh nine.
Are you okay with adding that to your motion, Josh?
Yes.
And Amber?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any further discussion on setting Kyle and Tammy as the authorized representatives?
Do we need to mention Liam? I mean, just?
No, that's a separate hiring or action.
That, that's contracted.
He's a point or, yeah, he's not one of the two representatives.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, he, okay.
He's a.
He doesn't have.
He's, he's a hired.
Well, we have three representatives and he's one of them.
He's a hired consultant, which he has access to all that, but he doesn't, he's not our two representatives from the county.
The county can have three representatives.
Oh, we can?
And Liam is one of them.
That's what I was told.
That, I was told that directly from Kate. The county can have three representatives.
Oh, well, may, who drove the?
And because Kate from FEMA.
Kate Kramer from the state of Iowa, Homeland Security.
And because we have Liam as one of them, we can have two.
Okay.
From the county, because we appointed Liam.
Oh, okay.
Liam acts as a reporter.
Okay, okay.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any issue with adding him on here, but he's not a county employee, so I think he's covered under the contract we have with his firm, but.
It's fine. I just want to make it clear that we.
Yeah, yeah.
This also addresses change. We're not changing him from one thing to another.
We're also not changing Kyle.
That is true.
No, but there wasn't, I mean, back at the time, there was not any formal board action. I don't know that there ever was to have Marge as one either, but.
Probably not.
It's just, it would be good to have it in the records since it's been discussed so much.
I think it definitely needs to be formal.
Are we good with the motion then?
I'm good with it. I just wanted to clarify what you said.
Well, we'll do roll call vote then.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
I'm not abstaining just because I'm included in the motion.
Wachter?
Yes.
Now?
Yes. Okay, motion carries for two, and four, and four eyes and one abstention. Okay, and then we have discussion decision request for reimbursement, four, four, two, one, category Z funds.
Yeah, so we've talked about this briefly a couple of times, I believe, but the category Z funds for FEMA are up to five percent on top of the approved project and it's all for management costs. And that's reimbursed at a rate of a hundred percent. So, um, this is recommended by the state that we request the reimbursement for those funds, even though we're still in the appeal process. They said it won't affect that at all. If the appeal is successful, we'll still have room to get more, but this would be a way that we could get those funds in hand faster, so.
And Kate said you or I needed to sign it? Sign something to do with that?
Yes, yep.
So is that? Oh, you got it here. Okay, very good.
Well, that would be me after the motion that was just made, but, yeah.
Okay. Authorized representative.
Or Tammy, but it's.
You're gonna have to sign it.
I will?
Well.
I gotta sign everything. No, I think it's just, it's just authorized representative. You can sign it.
Yeah, it'd be me or Tammy based on the last motion.
And this for sixty-eight thousand?
But, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any concerns with this, but, but in front, in front of the board for?
Approval?
Any thoughts or discussion made there?
Good, good to get it.
Any final comments?
So we need a motion or we don't need a motion?
We don't need a formal motion. We can, but I just wanted to.
Okay.
So if there's any discussion.
So it was already applied for or this is?
No, this, this is a reimbursement request that was prepared by the state for us. Um, but anytime it could be signed, so.
Oh, we got the agenda. We got it in front of us. Might as well make it formal. So I'll make, I'll make the motion to, um, approve signing this request and send it in.
Motion by Wachter, second by Haas.
Signing application for funds.
Signing application.
Yes.
And probably should we, sorry to say that Kyle signs it as our authorized representative?
CFO.
CFO.
Yeah, we can add that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. I can do that.
Thank you.
Drainage repair requests. I got one today, right? I don't know why, but I, I don't think it was Dean.
Yeah, we can talk about that later.
Oh, oh, that's the next one. Okay.
If one of you could scan that to me, then you can keep it for our physical records and I'll send it on to Kate.
Okay, is it Amber? Do you have, yeah, Amber, you've got the other one.
Yes, I have, yep, I have request number eighty-one, um, it's drainage district eighty-six, Maine. Section seven of Buffalo Township in the northeast of the southwest quarter. It's broken tile. It is flagged, um, it's original, original suture. Who put this out? So I'll look into it. And then I didn't know if now is the time you bring it up, so last week with the drainage repair request, is it okay to talk about that right now? Um, just so I inform the board what went on.
That's fine. Yep.
So there was the one for, um, we didn't really know what drainage district that was in when the request came into board. It, it is in drainage district one seventy. You will be getting more accurate information. Uh, they were going, they did physically go out and figure it out. Um, they were gonna dig it up yesterday or today, so I'll have more information. But then we will make sure that that request is accurate. Um, but once they dug it up, they wanted to make sure, because there's a couple of different things there that it could be. They wanted to dig it up first before, um, making sure that the request was accurate. So it was a drainage district and, um, we'll follow up, yeah, when it's done. I should, I'll probably talk to him sometime this week, so.
All right, and I had, is that all Amber?
That is it.
Okay, and I had the number eighty in district fifty-one. This is Irvington Township, second six, broken tile about five foot deep and five foot across and corn stalks by the hole. It was requested by Dean Ben Scooter. Need a motion for supervisors to handle their requests?
I don't have a actual request here, but just for discussion, I, I know in conversations about a request that, um, is up towards Buffalo Center for Jesse Jensen on Kewett Farm. The, I think the tile's eighteen inches and depending on how far that goes, it may cross the ten thousand dollar, threshold that we talked about for discussion, so I'll know more as we get into that one. But there is a chance that that could be more.
Working down.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's trees in that area. But I'd move to approve the request.
Okay, there's a motion by Stecker to approve the request.
I'll say.
Second by Wachter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Kyle will sign and put his phone number, please.
Yeah. Uh, no, because I sent it to.
You gotta sign.
I sent it to him, he's with, um, Brighton. So he actually went out there and followed it.
This is just a contract?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we just.
Very rich.
Yeah, I mean, I think all the budget was on fire, so I did all my, you know, like, plan us to the first.
I don't think so. Do you guys need Jennifer for anything else?
I don't think so.
Alrighty then.
Thank you.
We have the discussion with our auditor.
Okay, um, let's see what's on the agenda for next week. So far, just pay application number five and change order number three for DD forty, lap forty. And a request for a road removal from Leroy to Zika. Lowering gravel road that holds water back. Um, and that's so far all we have on the agenda for next week. I just wanted to mention, and I'm not poking fingers at anybody, um, that we have deadlines for our agenda for a reason. Wednesday at noon, there's for outside and Thursday at noon for, um, employees or anybody, um, Cassius County related. I know you think it's easy for me just to add something to the agenda, but it's not that easy, um, because I have to add it to the agenda. I have to add it to the motion sheets. Um, we have to add it to the packet. We have to, there's just a lot of things, steps that go into it. So we have deadlines for a reason, so, um, I hold everybody else to those deadlines. So I'd like you guys to remember those deadlines as well, so, um, just wanted to remind everybody of that.
Unless it's an emergency.
Yeah, there, things come up and it happens and I get that.
But if it can wait, it should wait.
Yes.
No, I'm sorry. I think I called you. I was one of those last thing. I think I called you at noon on, on Thursday and you were out to lunch and then I called, and then we talked later that afternoon or, or I sent you something.
Yeah, yeah, no, that is fine. I'm not.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have pushed it so far.
No, 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 you're fine. But it happens. I just wanted to remind her out there, that's it.
Yep, sounds good.
Tomorrow we start absentee voting in our office. Um, we have training in the afternoon for election workers and training again on Saturday. So we'll be in full city school election mode, um.
Any big contested races in Laverne?
Well, I don't know about Laverne, but we, we're gonna have quite a few write-in races.
Well, I, I think we, I think we've got one at least.
Write-in. We had a couple.
Nobody applied.
Yeah, a couple, one candidate that missed the deadline and then so.
I saw that.
Didn't know there was an opening until it was too late and, and then some cities that just didn't have any candidates.
Yeah, I think we've got one that has.
Yeah, yeah.
Which really isn't what, what you want on a.
No.
City council sometimes, just whoever gets their, their four votes, their family in there and then.
Yeah, and the extra training for a lot of home to write in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, yeah, so it'll be interesting. So I think that's all that I have. Kyle, I do need to talk to you about the projects Joe Goshi keeps asking me about, um, that maybe we were charged to the wrong drain. I can't remember what drain that is right now, but we need to look at that again, um, make some decisions there, bring to the board, so the board can make some decisions there, and keep that going. Um, Carter, I keep getting notifications, um.
From FEMA?
Yeah.
I do too, and I've talked to Leon about it and.
Okay.
Yeah, I, it, it's like they just have a default.
Okay.
Something is going past deadline and.
Okay, so, but we don't have to worry about?
I've double, triple checked with Liam that.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, my projects were done last year. We're not waiting on anything, but they just keep sending the email over and over.
And like, don't wanna miss any deadlines.
I know, I kept, kept making me worried, like, is something not right here and I don't want to be sending anything back, yeah, yeah.
So, okay. Kyle, if you could stop and talk to me about those and then we can get something on the agenda or whatever we need to do for that. That's all I have. Kyle, if you could stop and talk to me about those and then we can get something on the agenda, whatever we need to do for that, that's all I have.
Very good, Howard, any meetings?
Uh, I I know there was a department head, but I wasn't able to attend last week.
Amber?
Um well, I was walking over to attend the department head meeting and it was over, and so then I stopped, I was running late, so.
Oh.
Then I stopped and talked to Tammy about everything and um.
I'd made a list of everything, so I could go over it.
Yeah, so we went over that and. That's pretty much, that's all I have.
All right, Kyle?
Um on Friday, I had another executive committee meeting at CAJDC, um that one started at ten o'clock and. It went a healthy chunk of the day, so we got a lot of things discussed, we actually did a full facility tour on top of that. So we went through some things in fine details, but um I think we are making some good progress. We'll have a number of things to have prepared for the full commission at our next meeting, which I believe is the. It's fourth Friday, so the fourth, so. Not quite two weeks away. Yeah, lots of stuff in works for that, um. That's all I have for the meetings.
Okay, Josh?
Yeah, I had the emergency response uh commission and planning uh meetings back and back. Missed portion of the the uh planning committee, because construction got me held up a little bit, so. Um wasn't a whole lot discussed during that meeting, other than uh needing to say. Um official newspapers and stuff to um. Meet the the new uh open meetings laws and. Other than that, there wasn't really too much in the planning meeting, we went over the financials for the commission meeting. Um that's all looking pretty good, uh if you guys wanna see the the numbers, I can kinda show you, I'm not gonna go through all the numbers, um.
You don't wanna read every single line, I don't.
No, no.
I appreciate it.
Um. And then immediately following that, I had the region two uh transportation policy board meeting. Uh we did have a represent, um a presentation from Luke Hoffman of Iowa Bicycle Coalition. Uh they're, they updated their. Um they do like report on how many bicyclists and stuff ride on trails and things like that, they. Uh he did put together a really good presentation on on, you know, how much, you know, people are riding the trails and then the. The economics from that, because people will actually travel to different places to go ride the trails and things, um their their focus is on, you know, safety and. And just improving bike trails and and building new bike trails, there's um actually been a push. With the uh transportation policy board on some of that, they've um been building new bike trails, I know. They put in a bike trail between Mason City and Clear Lake recently, um and they've got another one, I can't remember where where that one was at. They've discussed doing bike trails from like Forest City um over to. I can't remember what that was at either, um. Yeah, just a lot of talking about bike trails and things, they wanna start doing doing more of those for alternative transportation and stuff. And discussed some of the road projects, uh we got an update from the DOT on on things, they're. Still working on. Our um highway eighteen out here, I was thinking that Chris had said that they're probably gonna be another month out. From completion, but Doug's got more information than I do, so um I guess they'll be finishing that up.
I think there's two different projects, the one that um Sexton is supposed to finish before the one where they have the pilot car. So I think there's two different parts of it going on, so one, I think Sexton's gonna finish earlier than the road paving where they have the pilot cars, I think that's why. There's two different dates.
Well, the road the road will be open before completion date too, you know, I mean, they'll be finished with things.
Yeah.
Well, and to Tammy's point, there's there's a difference between completely shutting off the road where they need the detour versus shutting off.
After. Mm-hmm.
One side and run the pilot cars, so there, I I think she's correct, I think there is a couple of things going on there, but.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The actual detour because of fully closing.
Yeah, and she may have said completely having that open by next year is. You know, they, she mentioned that, because they were having some issues with some of the stuff there, so I don't know if it was materials, I can't remember for sure, but something like the. The contractor there, so um. I think I have nothing, nothing, nothing too major.
Yeah.
Okay, uh I I had no meetings either, so I have a board health meeting tomorrow morning. Will we need a motion adjourned then? Motion by Garmin, second by Stecker. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, we adjourned at ten twenty-three. Twenty-four.